October 18th, 2018, meeting of the Fairgut Municipal Planning Commission to order. I'm gonna start with Citizens Forum. That's where if you have any questions or comments that are not related to anything that's on the agenda, you can ask the question, make the comment at this point. If you have something to do with one of the agenda items, please wait until then. I have something I want to start out with. We have training for Planning Commission members on October the 29th. It's Monday, a Monday night. It's from 6:00 to 8:00. And so...
What is it? What's the training on?
Property rights.
Property rights. I should stand?
Yeah, we've had it before. It's a good session and some of you all probably need the four hours.
That's what I was gonna say.
Some don't. Yeah, some are okay.
We have to have four hours every year in a calendar year, right?
You can allot the course.
It's a calendar year.
In a calendar year, yes.
So, we need to get that in.
Obviously, for a 12-month period, John, he just started, so he, you know, that's not gonna apply to him.
Four hours.
Well, he's, yeah, he's already got his, so he's ahead of the game.
But, so, and if you're not sure, you'll give Mark a call. He keeps records of this. As long as we turn our paperwork into him, he will have a record of it. But, have to have a record of it.
Probably next month. Well, if we find a good topic, we may present a TED Talk video for an hour or so to give you all some additional training and we could just watch it as part of the meeting. You know, if you find something relevant that we could talk, you know, that could show you all, and I think that would also qualify, you know, toward your training.
Okay, good. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on Citizens Forum?
I would really like sinkhole training. If you can put something together, that is one of those things that eludes me.
Sinkhole training.
What kind of training?
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole? I thought you said single training. I was like, well, I haven't done that in a while. My wife might not like that training session.
We may have a couple. We may find a couple of topics on shorter videos, maybe one on sinkhole or car's topography, and maybe one on, you know, providing for streetscaping. You know, how do you do streetscaping in a suburban setting or something like that?
Okay, good.
We'll look for some things and see what we can come up with.
Okay, approval of the agenda? Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I move on to the approval of the minutes for the September the 20th, 2018 meeting. Do we have any changes or adjustments to that?
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number four, discussion in public hearing on proposed changes to the town of Fairgut stormwater ordinance, Article One in general, Section 111-1, definition, Article Two, administration enforcement, Division Three, grading permits, Section 111-111 required, and Article Four, standards and requirement, Sections 111 through 150, general performance criteria for stormwater management, Town of Fairgut applicant.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lori Saul. I'm the town's stormwater coordinator. I know I've met some of you before, but I'm happy to see all of you up here now. At least you'll know who I am when you see me around now. So, yeah, we're proposing some modifications to the stormwater ordinance as a result of an audit that the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation conducted of our entire stormwater program back in July of this year. They found two things with our ordinance that they are requiring us to revise. One is to include the definition of priority sites or priority construction activities, and the other is to include requirements for land disturbance activities of greater than or equal to one acre, or less than one acre, if it's part of a common plan of development, typically common plan of development meaning a subdivision. So, in front of you, the proposed amendments have been incorporated to meet those TDEC required revisions, and they've been reviewed by town staff and approved by the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and have also been discussed at the most recent staff developer meeting on October 2nd. So, the first section referenced is Section 111-1, definitions. This is where I included the definition of priority construction activity, meaning any construction activities that discharge directly into or immediately upstream of waters of the state recognized as having unavailable parameters for siltation or habitat alteration or exceptional Tennessee waters. And just to clarify, that language is pulled directly from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation Construction General Permit, and a stream or water of the state that has unavailable parameters just means it doesn't meet its designated use such as, you know, habitat or drinking water or recreation. They have a whole list of designated uses. So, a water with unavailable parameters just means that it doesn't meet that designated use because of, in this case, siltation or habitat alteration. So, the next section that we're proposing modifications to is Section 111-111, the grading permit section. This section was modified to require sites disturbing one acre or greater, or less than, if part of a common plan of development, to obtain a grading permit. The majority of sites that meet this threshold for disturbing soil already require a grading permit by the ordinance because they're required to either submit a site plan or preliminary plat. And the majority of sites that we require those on are going to be disturbing, greater than an acre already are required to meet our grading permit requirements. So, this language revision would impact sites that are not required to submit a site plan or a plat, but are still disturbing a large area. So, essentially, this is going to impact only large, single-family residents on a single parcel, for instance. So, let's say there's, you know, a resident that, or somebody that purchases one very large parcel, individual parcel, they're not gonna be subdividing it or anything like that, and in order to build, say, a proposed home, they're gonna disturb an acre of soil or greater than that. That's where this would come into play as a change from what we've had previously. So, very likely, a very limited application in this case. We don't see a lot of that kind of development here in the town. And then, the final change comes in Section 111-150, the general performance criteria for stormwater management. In this section, I added Item 7, and this just states that those areas identified as priority construction activities, as was defined in the previous section, are going to be required to have regular inspections conducted, similar to inspections we would conduct on sites that do require a grading permit. And that's just would be our way of making sure that, you know, if there's a, if there's a construction activity occurring, and it could be a single-family residential lot, but if it's occurring right on the stream and potentially, you know, having water that might be discharging directly into the stream from that site, or directly upstream, upgrading it from the stream, then we're just doing additional inspections just to ensure that pollutants aren't entering the waterways. So, those are the proposed modifications that we're asking you all to consider this evening.
All right, a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, from the July audit by TDEC, are some of these requirements kinda getting us in sync with some of their upgraded requirements, or are they just kind of efficiencies or improvements in best management practice, or something that's getting incorporated into our ordinance?
Yes, these modifications would bring us into compliance. There are some deficiencies that we had with our program, some oversights that these would then help bring us into compliance with.
With deficiencies over some time, or are they kinda just recent deficiencies 'cause TDEC changed something?
No, they've, they're, it's language that has been in our, the permit that we're covered under for a while. We just haven't made revisions to our ordinance for a very long time, and these are just a couple of things when they came in that they're like, you know, we really need to make sure that these things are in there.
So, it's tuning it up.
To meet, yes.
The written reports in that last section, are they just go into Daryl's files for inspection anytime TDEC wants to come in and take a look at it, or do they get filed with somebody?
Yeah, and we do inspections on, and any site that requires a, you know, site plan or preliminary plat, we already do inspections on those properties, and we have those saved on our servers. So, yeah, I mean, if TDEC needed to come and look, they would. So, that's what would happen with these as well. We just have those documented in that manner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How often does the TDEC come in and audit?
They typically do a complete audit, meaning they look at our entire stormwater program, about once every five years. It's likely that in two or three years, they'll come back and just audit a specific portion of our program. We have six minimum measures that we have to meet from education, construction, permanent stormwater, and there's several others. So, they'll come back in two or three years to audit just one of those sections.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Have a good evening.
Discussion in public hearing on a proposed amendment to a site plan for the Fairgut Gateway Project at 101-109 South Campbell Station Road as it relates to the screening of HVAC units, Middlebrook Properties applicant.
Particular item involves an amendment to a site plan. It's already been approved through the Planning Commission. I'm sure everybody knows this project on the corner, South Campbell Station Road in Kingston Pike. It's under construction, obviously. The original site plan actually was approved back in 2016, so it's been in process for a while, and then we amended the site plan in 2017 as part of an amendment to the zoning ordinance that we made for smaller tracks to allow them some flexibility in building height. Originally, in the mixed-use town center, which is where this property is situated, there is a requirement for a minimum of a two-story building or the appearance of a two-story building. So, that language was modified for smaller pieces of property like this one, which is a little over two acres. So, a key component in the town of site development is, you know, we look at all aspects of site development, you know, when we're looking at site plans, and one thing that we pay attention to are the HVAC units, and making sure that there are provisions in place to screen those. And the requirement in the zoning ordinance is that the units shall be screened with opaque materials and shall not be visible from adjacent properties or rights-of-way, and then that such screening shall be architecturally compatible with the building the units are serving. There's also some mention of this in architectural design standards to try to, you know, work with the design of a building and a site to, you know, minimize the appearance of HVAC units, dumpsters, and things like that. So, so as part of the site plan review for this project, there was a note on the plans that indicated that the rooftop units would be screened by the parapets of the building so that they would meet the town's requirements. And I think during, what apparently happened during the process of going through and modifying the building heights, there was an error made in the sightlines calculations that didn't properly account for the size and the placement of the units in relation to the adjusted parapet heights. So, at this point, what the applicant is asking for you to consider would be options in lieu of what was originally approved through the Planning Commission. And since this was something that is, y'all have obviously not approved, the staff didn't feel comfortable, you know, making a decision or a call on that, especially in such a visible location. There's really two material-related options that were included in your packet. This is just some pictures of the site. This is looking at it from Kingston Pike, and you can see the units on the roof of both buildings. In the packet, there were two options presented that involved Trex material, which is basically composite decking rails that would be mounted with metal posed to the roof. And the first option involved basically moving the material back closer to, the screen material back closer to the units themselves, so it'd be kinda offset in front of the building. And then, the second option would bring that material to the front plane of the building, more or less, and, you know, further away from the units. Then, there was a third option that was referenced in the packet. It's just, and that's kinda what that Trex material looks like, is it might be applied in this context. The third option was basically a metal siding type of material. As you may have noticed out there on the Starbucks building, the building closest to Kingston Pike, they've added the black metal cap around the upper part of the roof line. And so, the thought was maybe continue that material as close as you can up to the rooftop unit screening element. So, you know, from a staff's perspective, if you're looking at the language of the statute, and it talks about architectural compatibility with the building that the units are serving, there's not really any Trex material on either of the buildings. There is some material like that for the dumpster enclosure doors, but it's not being used on the building. Now, the metal, there is, as I mentioned, metal cap being used around both of the buildings. So, you know, the metal option, though, wouldn't be identical to what they're using on the cap, would, I think, be more, you know, architecturally compatible from the staff's perspective with the building. The staff would recommend that if approved, whatever option, you know, if any of these options are ones that you are comfortable with, that they may wanna consider just putting up one unit screening and then, you know, having all of us take a look at it and see if that accomplishes the objectives and meets the letter of the law, and then, you know, they could continue that on with the rest of the screening, instead of adding it all, around all of them and it being a product that really didn't turn out, you know, the way that we thought it would. So, with that, I'll, you know, I think the applicant obviously is here, and they can try to answer any questions you may have.
Forward, like, in the future, if they're, like, one of the first two options would to be used with the decking material, would that have about the same maintenance upkeep that the metal would have? Because, I mean, the metal seems like it would be a lot less to take care of, I mean, compared to, like, the wood material.
The wood material is actually Trex, so it would be very similar from a maintainability standpoint. I think in our staff working with your staff, we would agree that Option 3 probably is the most compatible with the existing building. Same material, same color, it's just a little larger on the roof. One of the things we would ask, however, we're concerned with the schedule, the timing. This is a lead time item. Obviously, it needs to be purchased, needs to be installed. If there is a concern about it covering the units appropriately, we would agree with the staff's recommendation, let's take a look at it, do we need to extend it to go on? But what we would ask is that you would either approve one material or the other, and I think we're both, your staff and us, are suggesting Option 3, the metal, and then have us proceed with that. We agree that the units need to be screened. They've grown through the submittal process, they're about two and a half feet taller than we anticipated they would be initially, and then, I think Mark's correct, that as the building heights were lowered a little bit, those sightlines weren't re-verified. But, we're willing to screen the units, we wanna do it with a compatible material. We agree with staff that Option 3 is probably the best, but we think it's a burden to the project to get a material there and then have to tear it off and have gone through that time expense and anything else. We would love to just go ahead, choose one, and move forward if you would agree with us.
I need to get your name and business address before we...
Name's Kelly Haddon, Barbara McMurray Architects, 505 Market Street.
Thank you. Would the metal be that color as made, or would it have to be painted?
It would be a baked-on finish that is about as permanent as a color gets on metal, and Helen has the color that matches the existing on the building that she can show you.
It's a factory-applied color. It's not something that's applied in the field.
It is a baked-on kind of, that is correct.
And you're, the installation method that we're talking about is actually pushing the screens back to the units, not bringing them out to the parapet. Okay. I definitely think that looks a lot better than bringing them to the parapet.
I agree.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think we oughta go ahead. You're not gonna, if we look at one unit and then make up our minds then, I don't see what we're gaining, except exercising more time and possibly expense. We're not gonna change another material, and it's gonna be the feature that matches the building, so I'm comfortable with, let's get on with it and go with it.
Me too.
Same here.
And you're just tying the color into the coping color. That's what it looks like. Which is kinda the bronze color.
That's the coping color, that's correct.
Yeah.
Unit, not the outer wall.
Absolutely.
I'm comfortable with moving ahead. I don't necessarily think we need a sample. Obviously, you guys are gonna have to do a little bit analysis to determine what your ultimate height is gonna be, and you may have already done that. You are somewhat at a disadvantage due to the fact that you've got a roadway next to you as high as your building, and we knew that for many years looking at this site. So, I don't necessarily think that you should be held to the standard of, you know, whoever stands on the highest part of Kingston Pike, you know, they can't, if they're on their tippy toes, we, I don't necessarily think it's fair to you to say, okay, we can still see the very end of your HVAC unit, so I think there should be a little bit of flexibility. But I think generally, by looking at all the, your elevations, especially your Campbell Station elevation and your Kingston Pike elevation, the best you can to try to come up with a screening height that works. And I think you guys can probably do that with your software and not have to do this, you know, this little sample or test area, and that way you can get your material ordered, get it installed, and be done with it.
Yeah, and we're certainly not looking at a case like, I always think about the Target store down North Shore, and you're driving toward Mirable and Pallasipi, it's just a whole white roof and everything. So, we don't have that situation.
Well, we appreciate this, your cooperation, working through this and saying, hey, you know, there's, it's a beautiful building, it's coming along great.
Really is.
The brick details are very impressive, so we're happy things are moving along.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
So, you wanna make a motion?
I'll be happy to entertain a motion. The motion to approve the amendment to the site plan based upon Option Number Three.
Second.
Does that get what you need?
Yeah. You feel like that gives you enough, there's no ambiguity?
Yeah, that's fine. I understood their timing. I just was, hopefully it'll turn out good. I'm sure it will.
Well, I don't know what the other option would be.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's true, yeah.
I don't think we need it.
I think that definitely blends the best with the building. Yeah, no, you wouldn't mix it.
Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, we appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Item number six, discussion in public hearing on amendment to the future land use map and text of the comprehensive land use plan update as it applies to the Watt Road corridor and the mixed-use neighborhood and medium-density residential land use.
We have talked about this at the workshop session last month, and we've actually, the steering committee you all established a little over a year ago has worked through this quite a bit. One of the things that they were created to do is to try to be more proactive, especially in what we've identified as kind of priority areas of the town. A lot of them are gateway areas of the town. And the first area that they identified was the Watt Road corridor, because it is a gateway to the town. It's largely undeveloped. I mean, there is some development out there, but there are a lot of vacant portions of the corridor, and then, of course, it has a major town park in the corridor as well. So, as a tool of trying to help implement a desired land use vision that we've gathered from input we've received throughout this process, they're requesting to amend the future land use map for this corridor so that it would provide the Planning Commission and other decision-makers with a mapped vision that reflects the current, you know, preferences of the community that lives in this particular part of town, and what they want it to look like in a certain future date. So, this would also be important, you know, for, if anyone comes before you, with rezoning requests, you know, the first thing you're gonna do is look, this is the existing future land use map, and that's the proposed. We look at the future land use map to see if what's being requested is consistent with the vision that's expressed on the map. In terms of the changes themselves, from what we have, based on the input that we received at the two public workshops that we had on this, we had one that was really well-attended back in March, and we got a lot of good feedbacks and visual preference surveys and things like that. And the community really wanted to see, you know, if development occurs, kind of a smaller footprint, more neighborhood scale, commercial and office-type buildings, maybe more parkland because the park is kind of a regional park, it's an active park, has a lot of ballfields. Maybe look at providing for an expansion of that so that we can continue to market that as more of a regional destination. And then, there was kind of a desire to not have some of the traditional arterial commercial along the corridor, like more gas stations, large footprint buildings. And, you know, we talked about larger apartment projects is also not being desired in this area. As you all know, we already have a large apartment development that's underway north of the interstate at North Campbell Station Road, and potentially one that would come in at South Watt Road. And we want to, you know, be careful about having additional, you know, multifamily developments, because if we try to do anything and have a successful development around our mixed-use town center, we're gonna need that type of land use probably as a key component to get enough people in the town center to make it viable. So, the big changes from what we had versus what we're proposing was a reduction, significant reduction in medium-density residential, which is the apartment land use in simple terms, adding more neighborhood commercial that would be consistent more with the neighborhood convenience commercial zoning district, and then expanding that parkland use on the west side of Watt Road. So, that's one component of what's being requested this evening, and then there's some text modifications that are being proposed to the comprehensive land use plan. The density allowed for the mixed-use neighborhood land use is currently six to 10 dwelling units per acre, and what we're proposing there is to change that to up to eight dwelling units per acre, and that would be consistent with the neighborhood convenience commercial zoning district. So, and then, the medium-density residential land use is currently six to 12 dwelling units per acre. We're proposing to change that to six to eight dwelling units per acre, and then to create a new land use category for high-density residential, and that would be from nine to 12 units per acre. The only high-density residential that we have right now is Lanesboro, it's a little over 9.4. It's a little over 9.4 units per acre. And then of course the overlook north of the interstate is a little over 11. And the, as far as a medium density residential, based on what we're changing it to, the Derby Run apartment development would be something that would fit in that adjusted land use. It's about 7.7 units per acre at Derby Run. So that is both, that's both the map and the text changes that's being proposed at this time. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to express appreciation to the town for all the effort that's gone into putting this together. They've had several meetings. I think I've been to probably five or so where we talked about this and it's appreciated. I think we got a lot of input from the town. The second thing I want to mention is that during one of the workshops, the last workshop that we had, the topic was brought up about a streetscape and the suggestion that we have a streetscape professionally prepared. I'm a proponent of that idea for two main reasons. One is it provides a tool for the planning commission to use as a vision to get from where we are now in zoning to where we want to be with this future land use. And second of all, it becomes a tool for potential developers to look at and so they can understand more of what we would like to see in the area. I think that visual is a, is a really useful tool in achieving that. So I'm not sure how we get from my suggestion to actually getting that on the agenda somewhere, but I would like to bring it up as a suggestion.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience?
I mean, it is something we talked about at, at the workshop, the last workshop, is to look at not just the land use as abutting Watt Road, but Watt Road itself and that public space, the public right of way and how to maybe incrementally revisit the character of that corridor in the public right of way space. But that's ultimately a decision made for you all and the board, mayor and alderman. At the staff level, I'd, I'd see a lot of value in, in looking at that. But that's, you know, there's a lot of priorities and things to consider.
I, I would agree. You have quite an extensive to-do list. I know that you've added a, we finally have a planner in place and our building official. So things can start maybe loosening up as your planner gets more up to speed with what's going on. But it is something that we kind of probably need to add to our to-do list, but there are certainly other priorities that we really need to get on top of first. But it, it's something that we kind of need to put in the back of our head, that we need to be working on this.
Well, with, with us putting sidewalks up there and a crossing, some sort of crossing, I think, I think just to throw something like that at it without more, a little bit more of a plan would be just kind of a Band-Aid.
And my question is, is there space for that?
Well, it just depends on the plan. You know, we'd have to do, have to have something that's realistic and it depends on how, you know, the community, what the community wants to do. I mean, if it's a priority, you could potentially get more land, but I mean, that's not my decision to make. But it, you could do a, a streetscape plan within the existing right of way, I think. And, you know, look at different, different things to consider there, like adding more landscaping, maybe some, looking at ways to calm the traffic, maybe with striping and, you know, a pedestrian crossing that's protected and some things like that. But it's, and it's something, it's measures that would have to be incrementally applied, of course. I think you'd, you know, getting the sidewalks in on some of those missing links, I think is a good, certainly a good first step and trying to, to make it more inviting as a pedestrian to feel comfortable crossing Watt Road from subdivisions on the east side of Watt Road to the park.
Well, key components are going to have to be looking at that, you know. I think that's already being looked at is that intersection of Kingston Pike.
Yeah.
I mean, that's going to be a whole-
Yeah, it is.
Kind of domino for that, what you're going to do with that corridor.
Yeah.
What you, what you do, whatever you're going to do there.
True. Yeah.
Because that's going to carry a high volume.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's nice to see it drive, but it's going to carry a high volume.
Yeah. Yeah. It is.
Anybody else have any questions or comments now?
I move for approval of the proposed changes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
One for the plan, one for the text.
Well, they're all part of the same plan.
Same modification.
Yeah. Just a modification.
Did we vote?
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item number seven. This is for discussion only. Is that correct, Mark?
It is.
Okay. Just discussion on a preliminary plat for Waystation Trail Extension 12639 Kingston Pike, Zone NCC Site Incorporated applicant.
Yeah, this is very preliminary. It may be coming back to you all next time, next month. But what they're proposing, and we've talked about this when this property was going through the rezoning process, it's, most of it's owned, the new neighborhood convenience commercial. Of course, the area over on the east side where the floodway is, is owned open space park, which has been consistent with what we applied in other floodplain areas of the town. So what they're proposing at this time is to extend Watt Road from where it currently terminates into the south part of Kingston Pike through the, what's been known as the Swan property and then to tie it in to Union Road and construct the roundabout there in Union Road, as, as I understand it, as part of this project. The plans that have been submitted were very preliminary. There was some key aspects of the preliminary plat that were not provided. They were, they're still working on them. I'm not sure if they're just trying to look for your all's thoughts on the general alignment of the street. There's really not a whole lot you can do with the, with the street. It's, it does need to obviously line up with, with Waystation Trail and it will likely be a signalized intersection. Then of course they're peeling it off to the, to the west so that there's as much developable land to the east of the road. There'll actually be an out parcel there on the, on the west side of the road as you're coming in and this, in this portion. And then probably this area that's kind of a no man's land, just west of the road through this area, I think would be a good area to really have some heavy landscaping to make it, you know, part of a streetscape plan, which they still haven't submitted yet. But it's a real opportunity to make use of that space because it's really not going to be wide enough to be buildable, you know, or anything like that. Most of the front part of the property lays pretty well. It obviously slopes toward Kingston Pike. And then there's kind of a, once you get past the old house, at the crest of the hill, it drops off pretty substantially into a, kind of a sag as you're going toward Union Road. So in the area between the Union Road roundabout and north of where the old house is located, that's going to be, there's a lot of grading that would be occurring there because you're trying to, you know, deal with that topographic condition of the property. Let me see if there's a, a better slide here. Might show that better. Yeah, I'll put the, now this is, this is the grading, the, the latest grading plan. One of the comments on the very first submittal was that they were grading kind of the middle part of the property to where it wasn't going to be really a good space for interacting, for interaction between, you know, the residential, whoops, back here, between what would likely be the residential part of the development. Dang it. Well, I'm having trouble with this thing. What's going on? Yep. Bear with me for a minute, this is acting up. Yeah. So this has been improved so that the grades are not quite as severe between the north part of the property, which is where likely some residential would be applied versus the south part of the property, which would most likely be commercial and office. So the two can be integrated because we don't want them to be grade separated like we've had on some other projects. We want them to be, be graded so that they can be integrated together. They are also showing a, a connection to the property to the west, which is owned by the church, First Fergus United Methodist. And that's down here in this location. I'm not sure at this point if that's the best place for the connection. We've kind of looked at it in the field. It may be, but you're probably going to have to, you know, when you tie that into the property, you're going to have to extend, you know, the access point probably to the north for it to make a logical tie into where the church property parking lot would be. Because right now it would pretty much come out right at the church if you were to continue it straight due west. So they're pre-grading the whole site, obviously. They've got a couple of fairly large detention basins on the east part of the property. You know, some of the grading will remain as a comment of the staff's. I think they're probably over-grading at this point, some of the site. They really need to revisit the size of their stormwater detention basins because a fourth of the stormwater has to be contained in low impact development systems. So they can't just use traditional stormwater detention basins for all of their stormwater management. So, and I think there's some, maybe some traffic calming or streetscaping that might need to be looked at in this kind of straight portion of this road. I think they need to revisit potentially the lane widths there because they're showing two 12-foot lanes and it, there's not going to be parking on the street. I think, you know, 11 feet should suffice for that. And they, they really, I think, need to maybe incorporate some, some landscaping or something in that section of the street to, to slow traffic and to add some visual interest through that section. And then, as I mentioned earlier, incorporate some, some heavy tree planting just west of the street in that kind of dead space between the street and the west property line. And that's kind of the major points at this time. I don't know if y'all have any preliminary thoughts on this layout? Do you want to go over?
I have some questions.
Okay.
And probably, your questions are Noah questions. Are they grading this site to the extent that they are to, to basically get the dirt they need to make the road, you know, bring the road into some kind of, I, I know there's a term for it. Making the site neutral balance society.
Yeah. Cut, fill, balance. They have a big cut at the top of the hill. So the, so the road will be kind of down in, kind of, it's kind of visualize-
That's the profile right there on the screen.
It's kind of, I'm trying to, best way to try to describe it. It's a, they obviously, they have to cut a lot of dirt off the top of the hill and they got to put it somewhere and then stabilize the site.
Yeah.
But it does appear that they are mass, as part of this plan right here, that they would be mass grading, not really fine grading, not building necessarily pads for buildings, but try, essentially trying to take a site like this and make it a little bit more like this. Not flat.
Yeah.
But basically trying to balance their cuts and fills, which quite frankly makes sense. When you're doing it, it's easier to move all the dirt at one time or as much dirt as you can because it just, it makes the disturbances down the, down the road in the future a lot easier and your stabilization's better and, and so forth. So it, it, but it doesn't, so I guess I would call it, kind of call it mass grading or rough grading. But not really the detail grading that you would need to build buildings.
But you would require, if you're going to mass grade, then you would be required to put in some stormwater drainage system.
Absolutely. Yeah, you'd have to have temporary sediment ponds, which usually become the permanent detention ponds.
That's what concerns me about this, is that they're grading to a extent that they're almost setting, and I guess somebody could come and say, you know what, we want to redesign the site, but they've already put this in. Someone's going to say, you know, let's make this work around what they've designed. So it's already, we're limited on, somebody might decide from a commercial aspect that we need more housing than they would need more, more commercial, trying to figure out how that, I, I don't know how a, a commercial developer would come in and analyze that site. But it makes me feel like they're pigeonholing it by grading it the way they're grading it. They're making a decision beforehand that takes some of the freedom out of what could potentially be there.
I don't-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I don't necessarily agree with that. I do think that the location of the detention ponds is the natural location on that particular site. I am unfortunately intimately familiar with that site. And the, so those are the natural locations. So I do think those were, that's where they're going to be. I think, I don't necessarily, i- if there was a change in the ratios between residential and commercial, that could dictate substantially more grading in the future. But I don't think with what they're proposing here, whether they're doing, you know, multiple, let's say 10, 8,000 square foot buildings or maybe a couple of 25,000 square foot buildings that they'd be eligible for under the neighborhood commercial, I don't necessarily think that this zoning would be taking any steps backwards, excuse me, this grading wouldn't take, would not take any steps backwards in doing that. So I don't, and they still got to work within our perimeters and our aquatic buffers and the flood fringes and, and, you know, obviously all the erosion control measures and the, and so forth. So I, I don't think they're asking for anything unusual. This would be a little unusual if it was a wooded site. We might have a little more heartburn saying, hey, you're, you're sacrificing all these trees, but they're really not sacrificing any trees. There are a couple, maybe where the old house that burned back in the 90s, a couple of big trees there that probably would come out as a part of this. But by and large, other than where the house is, which are a lot of pine trees, there's really not many trees on that, that would be taken out as part of this.
Okay.
And you're anchored for the two ends of that road as far as the elevations and what you're going to have to deal with to get from A to B.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think the tree protection, that is, that's a comment the staff's had. There's some trees that I think we need to have a conversation with the engineers about and see if there's some that might be savable. And there's a couple out there that are large, but they're dying, clearly dying. We noticed them from Kingston Pike, a really large tree. I don't know if it's an ash tree. I didn't get out on the property to see.
Is it the one where the old, the old house that burned? There were some really big trees around that.
Yeah. It's down close to Kingston Pike, kind of on the east side.
Yeah.
But it's clearly dying and that, even though it's a large tree, there's no point in trying to save that. But there were some trees along the, the western property line.
There's some, along the driveway.
Yeah, there's a couple in there that, there's one red oak they're trying to save and another one that might be savable. It's, there, it's some challenging grade through there because you got that big kind of drainage area that is between the house and north to the roundabout.
Yeah. Well, it's a big dip that they've got to be able to flatten out.
Yeah, it's a big dip. So, you know, we'll just have to see if we can, can work through that with them and then see what their streetscape plan and, you know, can do with, you know, adding back landscaping and really having a new public street section that, that really is what we're trying to encourage with new public infrastructure and, and making it look attractive and, and not be inviting for people to go fast and make it really a people movement corridor. So there's a few things that I think we can, we can work through with, with them on. But, but they wanted to present it to you all just to- But, but they wanted to present it to you all just to get your initial thoughts on the rough alignment of it and if you had any, any other major thought.
Is that roundabout to the east there?
That's Fox Run.
It's Fox Run.
Yeah, that's another one's proposed as part of the Union Road.
It's not presently there.
No.
Fox Run.
Fox Run, yeah.
Mark, in the workshop, there was some talk about this road stub to the adjacent property. I see that shown there. Are you guys satisfied with that?
Well, I mean, there definitely needs to be a connection to the west, maybe more than one. We just have to look and see if that is the most logical place. Obviously, I'm sure the designers feel that that is and it may be. But it, we need to provide for that opportunity and maybe it needs to be a public street section that continues on to the west. That's another thing we need to, to think about. That can certainly change the setbacks of what would happen on that out parcel. But we, we want there to be connections so that ultimately whatever happens to the west there can get to potentially a signalized condition. I mean, it just makes sense for traffic flow in that general area.
I think their challenge in connection to the west is probably getting up that bank. There's, there's a pretty significant bank that's on the west side of this proposed roadway and getting up that bank was probably going to be the, the challenge. Mr. Dean, you're one of the homeowners that's closest to this. Do you have any, any thoughts about good, bad, or indifferent on how this is progressing?
Truthfully, for this is at this point.
Why don't you, we, we want your comments. We'd love to have them on the record.
And can we get your name and address, please?
Dennis Dean, 12715 Union Road. I'm directly on the backside of this. The biggest problem that I'm going to see with it is where my property lays, which is just right, it butts up to the creek as you're going through there west.
It take, if you took, and you drew a middle, an exact center line between those two roundabouts, that's about Mr. Dean's property.
Yeah, that would be just about where I'm at.
Right.
And when you come out of my driveway, if you look directly across the road at me, you've got about a six-foot bank.
Yeah.
So as you go through and you start dealing with that and how they're going to have to grade this, it's going to make a big difference on what happens through there. But somewhat, we're going to have to know what Union Road Development's going to do before you can totally decide that. I mean, in my opinion, is, I don't disagree with what they're doing. The concept is totally good, connected into the, to where you will go into, for like another way, the Ivy Farm property. As you go across, that's a logical place to put that roundabout, to have something there. You don't want it to go down through the middle of the property. But there is a major drainage issue now, as Noah's mentioned. When it rains heavy from the house above me down past mine, we flood on, on the road. I mean, you can go through and see the water standing, the ditches don't handle it all.
Water pops out of that ditch and crosses Union Road.
Absolutely, it pops out. And there's a lot of water comes down that hill. You don't think about it, but there's a lot more there than you think. And part of what I've heard, and some of you may know more about it than I do, is that when they do the Union Road right there at that top part, they're talking about possibly dropping the level of the whole roadbed six, eight feet to make it a smoother addition. Because as you go up Union Road now, then you drop off the other side a little bit.
Right.
So as they have to do that, how does all that fit into this? Because I don't want to see no more flooding coming my way. And truthfully, I don't think it's going to be an issue, I think, with Union Road, especially going through and putting a walking trail, bicycle trail, whatever you want to call it. Probably a walking trail, bicycles probably won't stay on it. But if you get that there, then you get enough width where you may be able to soak all that water up. But some of the grading is going to have to.
Right now, there's the bar ditch, it's just kind of flat with the road. There's not much of a bar ditch over there.
Absolutely.
So I mean, definitely, I think the drainage would be significantly improved, not necessarily with this project, but with the road project.
Right, with the road project. And this one, to me, I don't hardly know how you move forward with this one totally till you know more what's going to happen to Union Road. I mean, you've got to move forward. I don't disagree and I hate that for the people that own the property, but somewhat, you almost have to tie the two together to make it fit. Because if you do one and then you do the other one and if they don't mash, you've got a problem.
Well, I mean, I, I can't speak for the engineering staff. I'm not, I don't think they're here tonight, but I know there's been a lot of coordination with what we hope the road profiles look like on Union Road, but there's still a lot of work in design to be done on Union Road. Is that fair to say, Mark? Or is that, do we feel like we're 90% there on the design?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. Obviously, we've been trying to.
I see David shaking his head back there.
Yeah, we have been trying to.
We're 30% complete on the design?
On the, on what's going to be.
Okay.
I mean, we've been trying to work as close as we can with the, the design engineer for this project to.
Well, and really, there's a lot of coordination. You've got TDOT, the town's staff, and then you've got the developer with this one, his engineering staff, all trying to work this together.
But we knew that was going to be the issue.
Yeah, we did. We knew it was going to be challenging.
Right.
It was going to be a little bit fits and starts to get it all kind of coordinated.
But this roundabout is part of this project though, not the Hobbs Road, right?
That's my understanding.
At least they're being paid for it.
That's the way they're presenting it, yeah.
But it's part of the Union Road design.
Yeah, it's got to be integrated at that point.
Compatible with that design.
But once you anchor that down, then that's.
That'll, that kind of drives the rest of it.
We don't want that to move. We don't want, there's no reason to go tear out a perfectly good roundabout and do it again.
Yeah.
And that's one thing that I have not heard is, yes, they're talking about putting the roundabout, but TDOT can say, no, you can't. So until you have something definite from TDOT, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's no doubt that the developer can't do any construction within the public right of way without all the engineering being approved. And so there's, there's going to have to be coordination with all the parties involved to try to figure out, okay, this is what the roundabout's going to look like.
Correct. David Smoke, Town Administrator for the town. We've been talking about this project for a while with TDOT in coordination and along with the developer of this site. We have gotten confirmation from TDOT that they're okay with the roundabouts on the, on the cross-sections out there. We're planning on having a meeting with the residents, hopefully in the next month, to, and everyone that's along that Union Road corridor, so we can discuss the design, get feedback from the residents. But basically, the roundabout of this section has been okayed by TDOT. So now it's just a matter of making sure the grading's correct, the elevations are correct, and we have gotten quite a far ways into that part because we know the developer does want to meet and make sure they're at grade where they need to be for that. So we feel pretty confident about that. The rest of the design, obviously, we need to go through the public process and make sure that that's what everybody wants to, so.
I would agree that the lanes do not need to be 12-foot lanes, especially because that's a straightaway there. My concern is that becomes a high-speed thoroughfare and we have enough of those, so.
Yeah, it could possibly become a cut-through, a high-speed cut-through.
Yeah, yeah, potentially, yeah. They would, they would need to request variance when they get to that point then if they're going to do that, because that is the, that's the standard cross-section for the Collector Street at this point.
We need to amend that. But I've said that a few times already.
It will eventually, whenever y'all are actually voting on it, they'll have to.
But until then, it's going to require variance.
And they may have other variances in the, from the subdivision regulations. I'm not aware of any other ones yet.
Do you think there's a good candidate location on this, this new road design for a protected crosswalk?
Well, I think that's certainly something that needs to be looked at because we don't, we don't want to have to come back in 20 years like we're having to consider with Watt Road.
Like basically in an island. That's the best way to do it.
That's what I was thinking with.
And it gets, it also serves as kind of a traffic calming device at the same time.
A streetscaping element maybe on this straight, straightaway section. And then also down, you know, further to the south, it may be another protected crossing. But maybe some kind of a streetscaping element to slow traffic down through the straightaway section. And then, yeah, like a raised landscape median, you know, further to the south potentially, or maybe both.
Thing about that is trying to design that on the front end, not really knowing how that land is going to be used, because a lot of times people, when the land is developed, they tell you where that a protected crosswalk belongs. Because they're the ones that are crossing and they're figuring out where, where you kind of need to put that. I, I certainly support that. Anytime we can put those in place and put some traffic calming in.
I thought that, to me, again, this is very preliminary, but the natural location would be at that transition point between the commercial and the residential.
Yeah, that's good.
Now, there is, there are some topography challenges. The way that this is being designed to get up and over the crest of that hill, they've got to cut through the hill, which is going to create, I still haven't found the right word, not a canyon, but you're going to be going through an area with banks on both sides and put a crosswalk in there. We've got to figure out, well, you're going to have to go down the bank and then back up the bank, i.e. if somebody was trying to walk from, let's say, the church over to the residential area. But again, we're, I was trying to split the difference in that straightaway because there's a, there's a significant grade change through there and there's a long straightaway. I think, matter of fact, Darryl said there was 650 feet of somewhat steep road going through there.
Yeah.
That, and it seems like that might be a natural area to have like a little bulge in the road in the right of way to be able to have some sort of, instead of just.
That's what we were talking about at the staff level, is maybe incorporating some kind of traffic calming measure in the street there and using it as part of your streetscape plan.
Something that looks pretty, you know.
Raised, although I don't know with that incline, you can do that. That's a, what is that, a 6% incline? Six or five, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think, part of the street is 7%.
I assume that would not be open to a raised crosswalk because of the, the, the grade.
Protected crosswalk, kind of like the one we have over near Little Bangkok.
Yep. I know what you're talking about.
One kind of like that, but not necessarily one that's raised. We, it, it is, whether we like it or not, by design, it is kind of a cut-through. And that's not a bad thing. We were trying to eliminate some traffic in other areas. And so we were trying to give an alternative way for Saddle Ridge and the future Ivy Farm. And maybe even if you were going to Fox Run and you're coming from Watt Road, another way to be able to get into your neighborhood. So by design, it needs to be designed so it can handle that kind of volume of traffic. So, so it is, it's, I mean, it's going to be, I think for a lot of folks that live in Saddle Ridge, that's going to be their way home and out every single day.
Yeah.
And that's not a bad thing.
Not a high-speed one.
I think we obviously need to design it with a speed criteria, probably at, you know, like a 35. And whatever road it was designed with a 45 or a 40, and that's probably a little too fast. So maybe a 35 mile an hour speed design is probably, and that may be what we're already, that's maybe the criteria that's already been based upon.
I'm, I throw that out because they're doing those at UT. They're, they're doing raised crosswalks in, at UT and it's, it's really an interesting concept.
Look at the volume of pedestrians.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a little bit different. I do like it though, but.
It's more like a speed table.
That's exactly what they are, these speed tables. Or maybe there's probably another more. But anyway, it's a speed table. It's, it's not really a speed bump, but it's a table, just like what the mayor said. But I think it might be done with a protected crosswalk. That might, we might get the best of both worlds with that, where we get some, we get some calming.
Landscape it.
And, you know, some, at least some landscaping interest to it, some visual interest.
You'll have to be really careful about the safety aspects of that, won't you, due to the, the hill, the rise there?
Well, yeah, obviously there had to be plenty of line of sight. It wouldn't, it couldn't occur in an area that there's not good line of sight, so.
And it always opens up the potential, if you have a lot of traffic, to have a pedestrian activated warning signals.
Light, or something there.
Yeah, we want to make it inviting on the front end by design.
Yes.
And not have to come back later and deal with it.
Dodging, yeah.
Pedestrian bridge.
What else on that one? Okay.
If you look at those conjurors.
Roundabout at Fox Run, part of the Union Road plan?
Yeah.
Betty, talk into your microphone, please.
Looks like to be, it would only deal with Fox Run and maybe that house on the corner.
Are you talking about?
The one up by.
There's two roundabouts, you see.
Yeah, the one at Everett Road, almost.
Oh, okay.
That's Fox Run.
That's not really directly part of this particular project, though it has to be thought about, you know, because of its elevation.
To me, the big benefit of that roundabout is to slow traffic down in Union Road. So I can't, other than being fun, if you want to call them fun, I think the big benefit is, and one, it's going to circulate traffic better. And then number two, it's going to, if there ever is a busy time where roads coming down, a lot of traffic's coming down Union Road and you're trying to get out at Fox Run, it's going to be a little easier to get out. But most importantly, I think it'll slow the traffic down because you have to slow down going around those roundabouts. That's why I was a big advocate of the one on Virtue Road, was to try to slow the traffic down.
That was my, that was the original one that, when I was going through, trying to get a better perspective on what we could do for traffic coming Union Road, that was the first place that I looked at for a circle because obviously I come out of Fox Run all the time and Saddle Ridge, and Mr. Dean knows, they come down that corner and they just are flying. You would not, I think the, we've done a speed study on Union Road. As narrow as that road is, the average, the 85th percentile is like 36 or 37 miles per hour. It's ridiculous.
Yes, faster, that little narrow road.
But they come, Union, that stretch, it straightens out and it's like a, it's, it's a high-speed track over there. So the idea was, let's put some circles in, get people to slow, slow down and understand that.
You know, that also might encourage people, instead of going down that particular road, might encourage them to use the new road, the new access road going out to Kingston Pike as well.
Yeah.
It's one less roundabout.
So that was one of, that was another, that's why that circle was there.
The safety aspect with a, with a roundabout is, particularly if you're coming out of Fox Run, is you're turning right in order to turn left.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And, and that right there is a huge, big part of the safety of it.
It, they eliminate T-bone accidents.
So that's.
Any other comments?
I feel better with this. The, the original plan that they presented to us, they had the residential up totally.
Kind of up on a little plateau.
Graded, yes. And then the commercial below. And our concern was, you're, you're really not, there's no integration. There's no ability to have any integration. So we understand that there's, you know, you've got to deal with topography, but it doesn't mean you can't have a somewhat connected.
It sounds like they've, they've mitigated that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments? If not, we'll move on. If Mark's satisfied with feedback from us.
God, thanks, sir.
Number eight, also for discussion purposes only, discussion on amendment to the Farragut zoning ordinance, appendix A, chapter four, section 20A3. Number of parking spaces required to provide for the, to provide for the Board of Zoning Appeals to have the authority to determine bicycle parking requirements for unlisted uses. Knoxville Farragut Storage LLC applicant.
Back in July, there was a site plan that you all approved for the mini warehouse project. It was three buildings, actually, in the former location of US Golf, just north of the interstate. And in the parking and loading section of our zoning ordinance, there's a provision in there that if, if parking allocations are not provided for a certain use, this is vehicular parking, that the Board of Zoning Appeals shall determine what the appropriate amount of vehicular parking would be based on what the applicant presents as, you know, a reasonable amount of parking based on their use and similar type of developments that they may have in other areas and similar communities. So, so when the site plan was being presented to you all, then one of the staff's comments was that the parking space allocations would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for their consideration. And they, the applicant did take that to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the board approved what the applicant proposed for vehicular parking based on the nature of the mini warehouse type of use and the size of the facility. And, but an additional question that came about as part of the parking allocations was the requirements for bicycle parking. And the question was specifically, given the nature of the use and the square footage of the buildings for this project, it was about 84,600 square feet, the cumulative amount of square footage here, was the, the requirement for effectively 17 bicycle parking spaces excessive? Because the amount of.
I just want to see someone running a bike with a mattress.
The amount of bicycle parking is, currently, it's just a blanket requirement, one space per 5,000 square feet gross floor area. So when this was presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the staff indicated that because the language was not provided for in the zoning ordinance for the Board of Zoning Appeals to make a determination in relation to bicycle parking allocations like they can with vehicular. in relation to bicycle parking allocations like they can with vehicular parking allocations, that the applicant may want to consider pursuing a text amendment to address this kind of situation, which the staff does support conceptually, this idea of trying to give the Board of Zoning Appeals an opportunity to review, um, bicycle parking allocations for certain uses where an applicant, you know, appeals the requirement based on the nature of their use, surrounding context and those kind of things. Um, we, um, you know, we wouldn't want to just completely waive the bicycle parking requirements. I think there still needs to be an adequate amount of that type of, uh, facility provided, um, because uses and conditions and surrounding plans of development can change significantly over time and you don't want to, to say you don't have to provide any. Uh, but the question, I think, is, uh, you know, if, if this does come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, that, um, you know, they can, can be given the authority to make that determination, but there needs to be, from the staff's perspective, a certain, um, cap on how far, you know, the parking spaces can be reduced below the requirement. And I don't know if that would be, you know, less than, not less than half or maybe not less than one space per 20,000 square feet of, uh, gross floor area, which would be roughly what the applicant is proposing for the mini warehouse project. They're proposing four bicycle parking spaces and that's a little over 20,000, you know, one space per a little over 20,000 square feet. So, um, I think, you know, if you could put a cap on it and, and give the board the opportunity to do that, I think that is a good, uh, measure that we need to, to apply in the zoning ordinance. I mean, the planning commission could also be given some flexibility in determining bicycle parking, similar to what you all can do with vehicular parking if you want to, to do that. Um, yeah, we've got to be, I think, from the staff's perspective, pretty careful with how that, that language would be presented in the ordinance so that we don't create a situation or maybe some unintended issues with people trying to effectively get around the requirements for bicycle parking as part of the site plan review. I think a, a cleaner approach from the staff's perspective would be for an applicant to, to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals if they feel they have a really truly unique situation. Uh, so I don't know how you all feel about that or if you feel that 17 parking spaces is appropriate for the mini warehouse development, uh, that's fine. It's, it's up to you all. But they did request to have that revisited.
Yeah, I think probably time for a little common sense to creep in here.
Have you ever noticed or done any kind of survey on the use of bicycle, bicycle place use?
Town?
Uh-huh.
Um, no. No, we haven't. I mean, I see occasionally some, the, some bicycles on our racks that we've required and then a lot of times I don't see them at all, but I, we haven't really done an analysis of that. Uh, this is a kind of a unique use. Um, and I do think it's a good candidate for going before the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's just that we don't really have the language in the zoning ordinance that gives the Board of Zoning Appeals that authority currently.
I think it'd be smart to give them that authority, but, uh, I don't know that you'd ever have a situation here with a storage warehouse that you would have more than four people ride up to their storage warehouse on a bicycle. I mean, generally when you go there, you're in a pickup truck or SUV or something and you're either dropping something off or you're picking something up, but you wouldn't, probably wouldn't be on a bicycle.
Probably wouldn't want to store your bicycle there either, I wouldn't imagine.
I mean, I think the only time it ever be is maybe you might get an employee that rides their bike to work and that might be the, the only time it, at one of those bike racks.
Maybe the overlook right across the street. They could do that, you know, so.
But that's not going to work.
So I, I support giving the BZA the authority to make this decision.
You all have a feeling on the cap, I mean, like a point to where you don't want to go below, you want to require at least a minimum of a certain percentage or-
And like you said, um, uses change, but also we don't know what's going on in that area that, um, I assume the bicycle storage would, would be outside of the fencing. There's going to be fencing around this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it would be.
So someone might be-
I say, I mean, the natural place is put it somewhere near the office, but outside the fencing where the public can park, so.
And there'll be a walking trail constructed as part of this development on their frontage of North Campbell Station Road. And of course, you've got the apartment development on the other side of North Campbell Station Road, just to the northeast of this project. So, you know, there, you never know. There's, I don't think you would want to, you know, get rid of it all together, obviously.
I'd like to have a minimum of one.
Minimum of one.
For a small shop or a restaurant or something like that.
No matter what size.
Yeah, no matter what, you at least got to have one.
Yeah, what we got here at Town Hall?
Yeah, but if you have two, you can park on both sides of the loop.
So that would be two.
Right.
Basically, it'd just be one inverted. You would accommodate two, two bicycles, so.
If that's a minimum, then we'd want a cap of two of them?
Well, no, I don't think we necessarily want a cap because there are some scenarios that, that we might, we might, could use, you know, 10 bike racks someday if we had a large development. And so I, I don't necessarily think a maximum is in there. I think we'd get, we can catch the maximum, um, in, uh, in, in using the 5,000 square feet per bike rack. But I think the minimum should be in there. And if the applicant wants to challenge it, then they can take it to the BCA and let the BCA make a reasonable determination based upon all the facts.
Okay, I'll try to put something together with a minimum. We'll, we'll think about that. Because like I said, if you was going to apply like a minimum to this project or something roughly around not less than one bicycle parking space per 20,000 square feet would be a minimum.
Sir, I thought we were just going to leave it up to the BCA, but you're actually, you want to create some, some guidelines?
Well, it's up to you all. I mean, we can, we can craft it and leave it completely open-ended.
Somebody's going to come up with something that we hadn't thought of again and we'll be back here. I just let, if they want to challenge it, let the BCA make a determination.
Minimum of two, but-
Well, minimum of two, but one loop.
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
So.
Yeah, we can, we can word it like that.
20,000 would be four here. It'd actually be five because it's 84,600.
It'd be 16 or almost 17.
17.
Yeah, that was just, uh, you know, roughly with what they were-
Oh, right, right, with that ratio.
Yeah, they weren't quite at that exact ratio.
Yeah, 20, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we could, we can leave it more open-ended for the board and then just have a minimum of two, which is one inverted. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. We'll try to put that together for next time.
I have number nine, discussion on amendment two or removal of the planned commercial development zoning district, PCD, town of Farragut applicant.
Yeah, this is also a workshop discussion, um, and it really has come about from some issues that we've had with the only two planned developments that we've had in the town. Uh, this district was created originally back in 2006 as part of the Kroger Marketplace development. And then, of course, we amended it in 2017, uh, as part of the project that was submitted for South Watt Road, Kingston Pike to allow residential, uh, uses. And then we also updated other components of this district to bring it in line with some other modifications we made to the commercial zoning districts, um, dealing with setbacks and low impact development and those kind of things. Um, but the, the issues that we've mainly been having with this zoning district, it appears from staff's perspective, is really related to clearly satisfying the objectives of the district. This is kind of a give and take district. It's, there's supposed to be a give to the applicant to be able to do certain things that they wouldn't be able to do in conventional zoning. Uh, but then they're also supposed to provide back to the community something that is unique and of long-term value that you couldn't also achieve under traditional, uh, development. So what it seems like we've had is more of a give. I mean, you know, we've kind of given more than we've received, uh, from these two projects at this point, it seems. Uh, some of the things that are key objectives in this district, uh, deal with how you, how you establish and use open space, uh, to make it, that's actually functional, open space, um, place making, almost open space, creating a sense of place is another objective. Trying to protect the natural resources of the property, um, in a manner that you couldn't otherwise achieve with traditional development. Um, having some kind of innovative land use practices, uh, enhance connectivity and then, you know, enhance compatibility and consistency with, with adopted plans and ordinances of the town. Luckily, the town is really not, um, we, we don't have a lot of experience and a lot of use of planned unit developments. Some communities have lots of these type of developments and really the, the trend in planning is to get away from these because they create kind of a, a, a bunch of different developments in a community that have its own unique requirements and it becomes really hard to enforce and administer over time. Um, so, uh, luckily, we, we obviously don't have a lot of, uh, planned unit developments in Farragut. Um, and so I think, uh, if, depending on how you all feel about this, um, given the issues that we have had, there's some options that we can consider. And I have discussed these with the town attorney. Uh, one is, you know, just to get rid of the district altogether. Um, the problem with that is you've got two properties that are zoned this and that can create some problems with non-conformity, uh, and can create some issues for the town in terms of, um, enforcing and administering redevelopment of these properties or new development. Uh, so that would really not be a preferred option from the staff's or the town attorney's perspective. Uh, perhaps a better way to deal with this, if, if you all think it's an issue, uh, is to look at the different components of the ordinance as it, as it's worded. For example, you know, beef up the objectives related language, um, make it a requirement that whoever prepares, for example, the concept master plan, has to be someone that is predominantly with a, a background in place making, um, you know, that would be the predominant professional. Obviously, they'll have to use other professionals like engineers and surveyors to help with the design, but the predominant layout and, and master plan would come from somebody that specializes in place making. We could even have a third-party review of a design to ensure that it is accomplishing the objectives of what this district is trying to provide for. Um, another thing that I think we need to revisit, uh, is the size of the land that would qualify for rezoning to the PCD. It's only five acres right now. Uh, we could increase that to at least 15 acres. The two developments that already zone PCD are, are both over 15 acres. You wouldn't be creating a non-conforming situation in terms of land area. Um, and then we could also revisit other aspects of the, of the planned development district, um, maybe revisit whether we want residential in there. And if so, maybe tie some more specific parameters to the density, to how it's integrated, uh, internally, uh, and things like that, um, that could, uh, you know, make it a little bit more, um, substantial and, and achieve, you know, what we're after with this particular zoning district. Of course, anybody that comes before the town for this district is going to have to go through the rezoning process. And that's another thing that you all have the ultimate authority on, uh, you and the Board of Mayor and Alman, uh, to determine whether what they're requesting is appropriate with the town's vision. Um, you know, if you, if it's not provided for in a future land use map anywhere for this kind of, uh, development, then, you know, you certainly have good reason to not accept the rezoning request. So, um, those are just some things that the staff is throwing out for you all to consider to see if, if in fact you, you want this district to be revisited and, and if so, how do you want the staff to proceed?
Well, it looks like to me you need to, looking at the elements of two, three and four altogether.
Okay.
I really like the idea of adding a third-party review. I really like that idea.
Yeah.
And early step one.
Yeah. Early in the process.
I think we also need to bring our density in line with what we've discussed earlier.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree.
Or is the levels.
And I think we need to add in language about internal integration.
Yeah.
Um, tightening the objectives.
Circulation and all.
Yes, the objectives, uh, related language so that we almost need a checklist. Have you done this? Check. Have you done this? Check. And so we can point to it and say, this, yes, this fulfills it or no, this doesn't fulfill it.
Yeah.
You know, the Watt Road one, to me, looks like there's too much on it.
It is just, you're right.
It's.
[laughing]
I agree.
It's just too much going on in that piece of property.
Well, I, I think that you got to go to at least 15 acres too to make a-
Yeah.
Rashmakers.
And that can limit a lot of the potential candidates because, you know, there's not a lot of large tracts in the town that, you know, might, might qualify potentially for this kind of rezoning.
Noah?
My concern is with the words realistic, objective and sense of place. That can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And I'd like to see that defined a little better, I guess.
It's like tightening the objectives.
Uh-huh. That significantly tighten the objectives of related language.
Yeah.
And then concept plan to be realistic. Uh, what's realistic to me and what's realistic to Ed, you know, maybe two different things.
Yeah.
Um, since my thought, uh, since the planned commercial is not even currently listed as a current, as a land use category.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't think too much time should be spent or effort spent on this to start with. And how much-
Yeah.
Land do we have now that could even be possibly used for that purpose?
That's a good point. I mean, that's what I would look at if somebody came to me for a rezoning request at the staff level is, does the vision of the community want that? Does it show up on our future land use map? If it doesn't, that's a challenge that I think they would have to, to go through. I mean, that's something that they would have to address.
But we don't have a non-conforming grandfather. You know, the situation, number one, we got to avoid that.
Right, right, yeah.
But, you know, you look at that mixed use, um, where we've designated mixed use. Now I know neighborhood commercial and planned commercial are two different things, but, um, that whole area of Watt Road, someone could come along and say, okay, I'm going to purchase all these properties. That's more than 15 acres.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know. Obviously, they have to apply for that, make that application, but-
Well, you look at your future land use map that you just amended and see whether that's consistent with that.
Yeah.
Be the first step.
Would be consistent.
Right. Well, we can work on that and try to, just try to, um, add some language and make some changes and present, it may be a draft next time, uh, but present you with something to react to and see if that's on track. And then, you know, if it is, we'll pursue the next time with a-
Do you think that's high enough priority versus other things you're dealing with?
Well, I mean, it's-
I mean, it's not like they're beating the door down to put them in and then we-
We can make some real easy changes to it.
And that's kind of water over the dam.
Yeah, we could make some pretty easy changes to the, to this district that I think would probably, like the 15 acres.
I think that's all you should do because I think the priority is just not there.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me ask a question. Um, did we have difficulties with this process before? What were the major sticking points that made this difficult?
I think just trying to understand, uh, that we, uh, to try to separate this from like a traditional development is challenging because we don't deal enough with these kind of planned developments that are more of a comprehensive, uh, system. Uh, we, we kind of revert back to what would it look like under traditional development and we don't really, yeah, I think we've kind of- And we don't really, I think we've kind of fallen away a little bit from the objectives and the place making of it. It ends up kind of being like a traditional development that you could do under regular commercial or regular R six, for, you know, for that matter. And it doesn't really have those components that that the project would give back to the community as being something that's unique, something that's different, identifiable, those kind of things. That's a real problem we've had with the two that that have come before us. They really, I think you could have done either one of the projects under more or less a traditional zoning district.
I guess I'm not understanding what the difficulty would be in grandfathering those two. Anyway, what we're going to do away with this
Yeah.
Sends us into a a trouble zone. We should, I don't think we should get rid of it.
We have other zoning districts that we've grant that we've eliminated. I mean, so it's not the first time. I didn't like this in two thousand and six, and I still don't like PCD. It is so subjective, and it is so difficult to for the staff to administer and for the planning commission to administer. And it's so difficult for any outside party, a developer, consultant, to try to understand what the expectations are. I I really, I'm listening to what everybody's talking about and tightening the reins and increasing the minimums. We're going to make it where nobody's ever going to do this again. And are we just doing this just to keep the two developments that have been PCD in in conformity? Or do we is are we really saying we just don't like PCD? Because I like it, I've never liked it. I've I've always, I think it is an unbelievable arduous task for the staff to have to deal with these PCDs. And how long the Brooklawn took, and we still didn't meet the the place making objectives? How long will the Watt Road project took? And how much time it took for staff and this planning commission? I can't even tell you how many times that project was in front of this body, probably ten.
A long time.
And it was, and I just, I don't think I I'd really like to explore sunsetting it and eliminating it. If Tom Hale says we just should not do that, we need to listen to our town attorney. But we have, there are, I mean, I'm thinking of some of the storage zoning districts that we have. And I'm just, it's, we do have, we, it it has been done in the past. We have eliminated zones in the past, and those particular developments are grandfathered in. The redevelopment is a challenge. There's no doubt if all of a sudden that, you know, something happens to the Kroger someday or or and there's still a couple out parcels there at the Kroger Brooklawn site, that we've got to deal with it then. But really, I think the Watt Road development would have been so much better served had it had C one in the front and R six in the back.
Yeah.
And we and we wouldn't have had all these challenges with the the density that that Betty brought up and you just 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 the real difficulties that we've had with this. And so I'd I'd really like to thoroughly explore eliminating it.
Amen. I just think we need to simplify the process rather than continuing to complicate it.
Just a little perspective on the two thousand and six. You know, the developer at that time, we had a lot of look at that and we that concept. And there were vivid examples of where had they had done it and others had done it, and it had worked well. And and, you know, I guess, you know, certainly then you had the two thousand and eight financial situation that came along. And so there's certain visions, you know, just like the town center, that kind of went by the wayside in that time frame. And and so, you know, looking back, you know, twelve years, it didn't it doesn't look as good as it did at the time where it was being tried and successful.
The world's paid with good intentions. But I think that's that's the challenge with this is that it just, it it leaves the flexibility is wonderful, but it's just, there's almost too much flexibility, and it's it's so hard to determine how how high you got to jump.
Well, the time invested to make it work versus if you can make it work is disproportionate to what you
I just can't, I just can't see, I mean, you know, if we were in Sun City, Arizona, where we're, you know, I don't know, thousands and thousands of acres, what are we? I think we're eighteen thousand acres in the town. I mean, there's some huge community, and we're going to get these big hundred acre master plan communities. That's when you get into these planned districts that really makes sense. I just can't see it making sense in our town.
Yeah, I totally agree. Go to Tom and see if there's a reason to.
That's the big concern. I just don't, I want to make sure that we are not opening ourselves up to even more pain than we're currently experiencing.
And I'd like, again, how do we deal if if we do that? How do we deal with Kroger, there's and some of the outlots that are at Kroger that are within that PCD? How do we deal if all of a sudden the whole development plan of Watt Road changes? We just need to know what what the what ifs are.
Yeah.
And if the what ifs, if they just outweigh and we just can't make the the unknowns known, then maybe we'll go back and do these other things and just, you know, set the bar so high that nobody's going to apply for a PCD, which I'm fine with. But it'd be nice just to just just to be done with it. It was a it was a beta testing that we did, and it just didn't work out.
Watt Road still has opportunity to redesign and rezone.
Yeah, they could resubmit to us.
They still haven't addressed their subject to us from when it came before you all a few months ago, so. Really hasn't been approved, technically.
They're going to have a change, which will probably come back before this body. I mean, knowing that that project.
Yeah, we need to get to an evenness of appearances.
Discussion with Tom about that and just see what obviously, you all have the authority, if somebody came before you in this transitional period and wanted to rezone some property to PCD, you have the authority to say, no, we don't think that's appropriate. Keep that in mind.
Remember the training October the twenty ninth, six to eight here?
That's Monday night, and that's Monday, isn't it? Okay, I'll be here.
You took the utilities line off of here.
He never thinks of utilities. He he's saving paper, he's saving paper and ink, saving paper and ink. So the October eighteenth, twenty eighteen, Fairgut Municipal Planning Commission is adjourned.